In Osami City, you're watching One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with information, news, sports, and public affairs. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with love. Ang telebisyon pang masa. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. One TV Special Report.
Mas again, good afternoon. Please and everyone of us may call on the secretary for our open. Present. Having ten members present, the chair declares a room. Mas again, good afternoon. I may call on our majority floor leader, the honorable Monsieur Tapayan, for the order of business.
Yes, Honorable Chair, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. We are supposed to, I guess, afternoon, Honorable Chair, to speak during our people's hour regarding our decision in the Denge in Osami City, Honorable Chair. We have our city officer, Dr. Irog Irog. May give him, we give here the floor, Honorable Chair. I move to suspend the rules to allow Dr. Irog to present the Denge station in Osami City, Honorable Chair.
No, suspended. Dr. Irog Irog, you have the floor.
Can we allow Dr. Irog to sit at the desk of room? And give her another power, okay? Thank you, Dr. Irog. May we see us the floor, Honorable Chair.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone to our chair and to our honorable council, councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the current Denge update, Denge cases update in Osami City. So as of yesterday, March 24, 2025, we have a total of 291 Denge cases in Osami City. We have two active, two new cases yesterday whom are admitted in our hospitals here in Osamis. And we have 11 active cases. So these 11 active cases were admitted or are admitted in different hospitals here in our city. As of yesterday also, our current update on Denge cases, since we started our intensified daily search and destroy of the breeding sites, the cases went from increase, the number of cases went down and increases in the third, no, second week of March. And as of last week, the trend decreases. And as of Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and up to present, as we have noticed, the cases went on three, two to three cases per day. So it means, meaning to say, our efforts on daily search and destroy. Karun panato nakita, hinay-hinay na nagkaubos. However, we are not, we should not be compliant, compliance because as of the daily, weekly meeting from the DOH, we are, the cases in Osami City is increasing as of previous weeks. So we are already on an impending outbreak. So that is why, as of today, we are urging, especially on community involvement, that we should all participate in intensifying our five S strategy. Specifically on the search and destroy of the breeding sites, the self-protection, and the seeking of early consultation. Okay, thank you. So that would be all, thank you.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Irog Irog. Any...
May I respond, Honorable Chair? We would like to commend the city office for their active active program in enabling to eliminate, minimize the Denge cases in our city, Honorable Chair. And also our fire officers who conducted daily search and destroy activities in the barangay with the guidance, of course, of our state, aided by Dr. Irog. And although we don't have the outbreak yet as defined by the DOH's office, but we should stay alert because every day is raining, there is rain, and the Denge cases is, will, is possibly will rise, the Denge cases will rise possibly, Honorable Chair. So we have to stay alert. And our barangay officials should continue to sustain their activities in conducting the search and destroy. And we have, we have to urge the people to take a proactive and aggressive stance and to undertake measures particularly in complying with the five S studies against Denge. Honorable Chair, later on, I will, I will sponsor to insert in our, in our order business a resolution urging people in Osami City to be active and proactive in assisting the Iggyo, the city health public officials in our fight against Denge, Honorable Chair. I will try to insert a resolution on that matter in our later part of this agenda, Honorable Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we have manifestation, honorable majority floor leader. Any other query or manifestation for the other members of this august body? Yes, Honorable Chair, so... Go ahead. You have the floor now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And we, we would like to thank also city health officer, Dr. Irog Irog, for updating us. This was reported during the city health board council. And then, in fact, we had our regional representative from the region, the Department of Health that time. And then, there is actually a period that we need to determine with, along with our activities on our daily monitoring and daily search and destroy. And then, we were given only two weeks, I think, to really make, can, to really see what would be the rate of success evaluating for the daily search and monitoring. And I have heard from Dr. Irog Irog that there is an impending outbreak. Will you suggest, Dr. Irog, as of this moment, that we need to declare a Denge outbreak or not yet? We need still to cover the last two weeks given to us by the regional DOH?
Any comments, Dr. Irog Irog?
Yes, thank you, Consi Hal Dinki. With regards to the, the outcome of our intensified strategy, actually, what we have done, we, we have already begun our intensified for the last one month. And again, for the, like, for the, for everybody's information, the cycle, we, we look at again the cycle of the, life cycle of the mosquitoes. So as you can see from the period that we have already started our strategy, there has, in the first two weeks, there has been a decreasing trend. However, nag-increase na po siya for the next two weeks. Amount, for totaling for the four weeks that covered the one month. After that four weeks, we have also observed that there has been a decrease in number. So maybe, I can say that it is too early to predict the one-month na strategy na to, whether we say the, with our, our efforts have not been ulay good result. How, but for the, if we are given another two weeks to monitor the cases and we sustain these efforts, maybe we can see na early on the effect, the, the positive side on our strategy. Because today, this, since Saturday, Sunday, and yesterday, nagkahinay namanggud ang number of cases. So basin after a month panato makita yun ang effect. Last, like last year, the effect, we have seen the effect of the weekly search and destroy two months after pag yun sa strategy. So ang, ang ato na lang yun karoon is we sustain our efforts. Kaysa ay manggud, kapoy manggud ng everyday. But if we maintain it and do it as a routine, dili namanggud siya hago kay, kwan naman siya kanapart na sa atong daily living. It becomes the habit of being clean at in our environment. So kana lang good, I'm, I'm appealing na we urge also community involvement kay dili kaya kung kita lang nga naasag kwan. And which community, it doesn't mean the household, but also includes the area where most of the time asata. So ang atong cases, the most affected were the children, school-aged children. So we urge the depth ed and other public, private schools nga mag, nasilay daily po, daily. So becomes part of their class nga mag-limpyo sila sa ilang school. And also other establishments. So as of now, I can say we should, we should we sustain lang sa, with our activity. Even, dili lang sustain, but kwan pag yun intensified pa yun. And if that efforts will not succeed, then we will declare the outbreak.
Okay, very good, okay, Dr. Irog. Any other is comments, honorable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just like to inquire further from Dr. Irog Irog if how is Osamis doing and caring in terms of the cases in the neighboring towns and municipalities? Is it only in Osamis that Denge is high rising? Thank you.
Yes.
So based on the data reported from the DOH Region 10 Rescrew Unit, in, in Region 10, Misamis Occidental has the increasing cases of Denge. And we also have the most number of Denge deaths in Osam, in Misamis Occidental. We have a total of 10 deaths, and six of whom are from Osami City. In Misamis Occidental, based on the analysis, data analysis and the results from the, from the provincial health office, three district cities of whom are Osamis, Tangub, and Oraketa, we are already on impending outbreak. So daghan ang cases sa Kaning Toloka cities. And one municipality is...
Plaridel, no?
Plaridel and... So Plaridel had also increasing cases. And since we also have daily monitoring in the province, as I have observed, based on my observation, other city, other LGOs also had an increasing cases of Denge. So mas daghan lang yun ta because we are the most populated city. But based on that statistics, is agyuta sa top, pero actually kita yun ang number one, followed by Oraketa, Tangub, and then Plaridel.
Okay. Any other query from this...
Yes, Honorable Chair. In our last POC meeting, during the with the Osami City Headboard, the DOH people were here to make also a report and guidance to Iggyo about our Denge cases. While they reported that there is outbreak yet, but if we will not be vigilant enough in our efforts against Denge, it is possible that we will have an outbreak later on. So they acknowledge also the, the attending the activities we have here in Osamis by the barangays and by the city office, and recognize the efforts by Iggyo on that matter, Honorable Chair. They encourage us to sustain our efforts related to this attending Denge campaign of the city. That is why there's a need, Honorable Chair, that every Osamis nun, every family in Osamis should be aware of our fight against Denge. Because this fight, with only did by officers alone, city government alone, posited alone, but this should be a collective effort by every family, every resident of Osami City to fight Denge because every day there is rain. And we know very much that the mosquito thrives on stagnant water. So we have to sustain this program as being manifested by Dr. Irog. And we have to continue the fight. And to urge our people to join us in this fight against Denge because this is all for the benefit of all Osamis nuns. If every family in Osamis fights against Denge, Honorable Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable Tapayan. Any other comments or remarks? Yes, honorable, Ilongson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, to make a, 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 can, an inquiry to Dr. Irog Irog. Um, unsang, as of this moment, unsang lugar karun ang hotspot sa Denge sa Tuang Syudad?
Particular barangay?
Pila ang pagsaka or everyday na mag gather na data and in that particular barangay?
Thank you, Consular. As of this, as of the mo, as of today, I can, I don't have any, but the, the barangays with, we are considering hotspots or those barangays with clustering of cases, meaning to say daghan, no? Daghan cases in the past four weeks. These barangays includes those located in coastal areas and their neighboring, neighboring barangays of which, top of them is the Tinago, Triunfo, Katadman, Carmen Annex, Aguada, Malaubang, the most, kana sila. And then, however, like I said earlier, kani sila per day kita, ang atong monitoring kay everyday man, new cases. Last week, nag-decrease na yun ta from katong previous weeks nga. In a day, we have 11 new cases, followed by eight new cases, then increase na po to nine new cases. As of Saturdays until today, we have recorded one on the Saturday, ah, two on the Saturday, one on Sunday, and yesterday was two. So marasyag ni, ni babag yun ang atong number of new cases as of yesterday. However, we should not be campante, complacent because there is a possibility nga, today we have a lot of new cases because, as have previously mentioned by Consi Hal Tapayan, we have rainy season, rainy day since the weekend up to yesterday. So there is another probability of having stagnant water in our areas. That is why we sustain the daily because every time nga ay mag-stagnate, ato na pong ipangyabo or itaob ang mga katong nagtipok na water.
Okay.
Honorable Chair?
Paluap?
Are you allowed? The Denge cases, the first two months last year, January, February compared to the first two months yun, mura kama or ang Denge cases, but at least the, ma'sa namatay karun ta iga, January, February compared to last year. So is it really sari nga, ang five six, ato implement labi na yun dong, ang katong usakasi nga, sick early consideration? Kuna agi maghilantana, gamay, ikutu ta da sa city doctor para mati man dahil pramakita yun ang sign symptom nga Denge nga dili. Kung medugayun, mas liso na ato buangan ang ya sakit. So earlier detection, the better. So we urge our citizens nga, gwas nga sa tungsel mistoy, kunagin muda semilya labi na bata, idalar doktor da yun, dilang, tinan tambang nga prestamo o si application, mas maayog nga da yun doktor para mabilipay ang sakit Denge, Denge pa. So like dagang namatay karun ta iga compared to last year, the first two months, January, February, as recorded in our records, Honorable Chair. Well, thank you very much, Honorable Chair.
Okay, thank you, honorable Tapayan of your manifestation. Any other remarks or queries from this august body?
In janan, Honorable Chair, we have to talk to Dr. Irog Irog and her party. We have here Sir Bix Go, who is also active in our fight against Denge. He is the latest officer of the Iggyo and anti-Denge campaign, and also another employee of the city. We thank them for their continuous vigilance in our fight against Denge. And I refer it in the next order business, I have to include in our agenda a resolution urging the people of Osami City to take an active, proactive and aggressive stance against Denge and to undertake measures to fight against Denge, especially to comply with the five S as being undertaken by our city office. The five S program like the search and destroy and other is, Honorable Chair. So thank you very much, Dr. Irog, and Sir Go and her party for the coming here. Be assured that this august body will be supporting our efforts in our fight against Denge. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much. Okay, the chair would like to thank the Dr. Irog Irog and the team for very active, no? Fighting against this Denge. Thank you very much for your extra effort on this particular activity. Thank you, Dr. Irog.
With that, Honorable Chair, I move to resume the rules. To see the, our agenda, Honorable Chair.
Rules is resume.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Then is, I think, our order of business is the approval of the agenda for the day. There are about seven written requests, Honorable Chair. And I will add number eight regarding the response to the appearance of the city officers hited by Dr. Irog this afternoon. So there are eight proposed instructions or order business. And may I start with the first? Induced by the POC Kadak and CDR MC, the OPOC Resolution Number 25, ACOJ 001, Resolution granting authority to the city mirror for the list of confidential funds and for the foundation and implementation of program budget activities relevant to the national security under pressure on the Osami City. APO during the jet meeting of the Osami City President of the Council, Osami City Underdrugs Abus Council, and City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council on January 20, 2025. Honorable Chair, the second written request is for us to concord, adapt the resolution of the during council meeting of the POC Kadak and RMC, OPOC Resolution Number 25, ACOJ 002, Resolution approving the intercession of food supplies expense in amount of 5 million under pressure order and public safety program budget for the year 2025. APO during the meeting of the Osami City President of the Council, Osami City Underdrugs Abus Council, and City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council on January 20, 2025. The third written request also comes from the same during council meeting, OPOC Resolution Number 25, ACOJ 002, our resolution approving the intercession of food supplies expense in amount... No, our resolution approving the programming reservation of the communication equipment program in amount of 2 million 400,000 pesos under capital outlay under pressure order of public safety budget year 2024 to the maintenance and other operating expenses of the pressure order of public safety budget year 2025. APO during the meeting of the Osami City during OPOC pressure order Kadak and the CDR MC Council. The fourth written request is our concorrance and adoption of Resolution Number 01, Series 25, our resolution approving the intercession of 5 million pesos from 25 local disaster reduction and management fund investment plan in the area in FIP for food supplies expenses for adoption and current, Honorable Chair. The fifth written request is for us to concord, adapt the resolution of the IDRR MC our resolution limiting the funds under maintenance and other operating expenses for the procurement of automatic external DP bill liters, EIDs, in amount of 1 million in amount of 1 million 400,000 pesos to capital outlay. And, uh, our number six written request is for us to concord and up the resolution of the June Council Meeting of the POC and the RRIMC, uh, Resolution approving the intercession of the accident balance of the 2024 Local District Reduction Management Fund in recent plan in amount of 28 million 400,000 pesos and 76,000 tabos. And the number seven written request is for us to pass a resolution for tracing the local executive, Honorable, Henry Valen Junior, to enter into a sign on behalf of City Government of Osami City a member of agreement with the provincial government of Osamis Occidental for the financial contribution of Osami City in amount of 6 million 730,000 pesos and 200,000 pesos and 76,000 tabos source from the sports development program of 2025 special chicken fund for the 2025 parang pabok. And the intention number eight, um, my team, officer, is resolution urging every family and all residents of Osami City to be proactive and aggressive in our stance in anti against dengge and to conduct measures to inner fight against dengge in Osami City particularly to comply with the PIPES studies, namely, search and destroy, uh, self-protection, sick early consideration, etirra, etirra, officer. That's the number seven, number eight, uh, last decision to order business, officer. And I promote deep motion to approve, uh, the number delay with it. Propose sessions, officer, urgent motion.
There's a motion from the Honorable Majority Leader for the approval of agenda for today with eight inclusion as being presented, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number six, four of the minutes of the previous sessions, everybody was punished capex of the minutes of our resolution on February 7 and 11 this year, 2025, and I guess everybody was able to examine and because they could not sit up, Honorable Chair, I accordingly move deep motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous sessions on February 7 and 11, 2025, and to approve this minutes in total, Honorable Chair.
There's a motion from the Honorable Majority Leader to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous sessions dated February 7 and 11 and approve of the same. Any comment, remarks during the motion approved?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number seven, first reading of the business, please be sure to let it be whereby we have two items for our consideration. Number one, from the desk, Honorable Chair Tapayan, our resolution reverting the amount of 10,000 personal services and approving the same for capital outlay, reputation equipment motor vehicle bao bao under the Office of City Council. And number two, Honorable Chair, our resolution reverting the total amount of 10,600,000 personal services and personal services to maintenance under operating expenses under the Office of City Council. Officer, this, this two, uh, resolutions, operation, I move approval of the proceeding with the suggestions, officer.
There's a motion from the Honorable Majority Leader for the approval and first reading with the, with this two proposed resolutions as being presented, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Due to the demand of public interest and essential public service to expose some vehicle management, these two revisions are taken from our CBS, from personal services, from our employees who retired from the LGO and City Council, officer. And we need to revert this to be able to respond to the needs of our City Council to purchase, uh, uh, modest vehicle, service of our employees in their, in their job, officer. Uh, also to support our building balance of our EOE in our budget, officer. So with this, I move approval of distributions, number one, number two, for second reading, weaving the general rules, officer. Second and final reading, weaving the general rules.
There's a motion from the Honorable Majority Leader for the approval of these proposed resolutions coming from the, and from the desk of Honorable President Tapayan. These two resolutions, a resolution reverting the amount of 300,000 from personal services in appropriating the same for capital outlay for transportation equipment, motor vehicle or the bao bao under the Office of the City Council. And the second resolution reverting the total amount of 364,966 and 56,000 tabos from the personal services to maintenance and other operating expenses or EOE under the Office of the Capital, of the City Council. Move with the Honorable Majority Leader to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, here in the motion approved?